Well, Joelle, thank you for joining me today.
Well, thank you for having me, Carlin. I've been looking forward to this.
Yeah, good.
Anxiety and preparation for it, but I've been looking forward to this.
Absolutely. And just sort of viewers or the listeners, viewers, whatever you're doing, no, we are following, we have seven questions that we're going to be asking all the candidates, the same questions right at the start. Then after we're done those questions, we'll just have a little bit of a free for all. I might make some notes on things that you said and go back and ask you a few things that you've mentioned. But Joelle, just to kickstart us off, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? And what motivated you to run for town council?
Uh, well, I feel like I'm a very community driven person. My whole working life has been community service. Right out of high school was paramedics. Uh, I worked in Northern Alberta as a paramedic for years and then a 911 dispatcher. And then I got into radio broadcasting and was doing communications for the last 15 years. And of the last two of those 15 years, I've been doing the, the morning show in the radio station in Oketoks. And that's kind of where this conversation began about should I get into this or not? Because I've had this incredibly unique opportunity to interview and get to know community members. Everybody from, you know, people who live on my street have been in my studio to the RCMP, to town council. And I've been listening to the things that they've, you know, their achievements and their accomplishments, to their complaints. And I don't know, after two years, I think that maybe my skillset could be utilized in a way that is serving the community in this capacity now, instead of just with broadcasting.
Yeah, right on. That's awesome. What is your vision for Oketoks over the next four years? And what role do you see yourself playing in helping achieve that vision?
Um, well, over the last couple of months, I've been doing a lot of reading of what actual council can do. Um, and so, uh, along with the, the situation and the complaints and concerns, I should say, that people have been voicing, my focus is going to be, um, my, my vote will always be for the betterment of the people of Oketoks. Like, everybody has a problem with the growth and the rapidness of that growth. And, um, it's coming, so how can we manage it? And, and that's where I think my focus is going to be. Uh, obviously, we all have a love of this beautiful small town and we want to keep it as small and a town a feel anyway, if, if numbers are maybe not small anymore. But I think the focus should be community driven events, community driven volunteering, community driven service, and, and listening to community members about what they want and how we can keep pace with the growth that we already know is coming. How can we make sure that it's not as inconvenient for everybody as, as it could be?
Now, you touched on this a little bit in your answer there, but in your view, what are the top two or three issues facing Oketoks right now? And how would you approach them if elected?
Um, well, I definitely, again, growth and housing is a concern. Um, and the, and like I said, it's, it's coming. So if we can shift that instead of, obviously, we can't take any of the growth back. Um, but I think the top ones definitely growth housing. Uh, I think small business and, and trying to make it a little bit easier for small businesses to be as successful as they can be. You know, franchise fees or, you know, just overall increase in everything. Cause it's the most expensive time to be a human on planet earth. Um, and so just trying to help with that and, and seeing ways that we can help.
For sure. Now, again, uh, we kind of, you're covering the questions, you're foreshadowing on the questions, which is awesome.
Sure.
No, no, it's good. So it's going to seem a little bit repetitive, but we're gonna ask it just because that's the format. Oketoks continues to face challenges around growth, housing and infrastructure. How do you believe the town should balance development with maintaining its character and livability?
Well, the character part is, well, I think why people chose Oke, it's not, it's why we chose Oketoks when we moved down here 10 years ago. Um, it's so charming and it's quaint and there's always these beautiful, uh, um, activities and events that the town puts on. And then I, I don't want to ever lose those, so keeping a focus on that. Um, and I also think, um, small town is a, is a feeling. And I know that's such a kind of cheesy or cliche thing to say, but it truly is. And I think what that feeling does is draw people to want to participate in those things, whether it just has come to the events or, you know, yourself participate in the community. And so one of the things that I've always done and believed in, uh, and continue to do is myself be an example of how you can be involved with the community and the things that will help keep that small town feel. Um, and everybody's availability for that and, and helping with the community is different. Um, but things like town cleanup, I mean, that's such a small thing, it's such a simple thing, but I think it goes a long way. I think it shows the unity. So being a, a personal example of that, we bill it for the Oketoks Oilers, that's how we bring to the community. So, um, as a councillor, um, I will just continue the life that we live where I don't believe in asking people to do things I myself wouldn't do. And, and put myself out there and our family. Um, so I think that's an important way to maintain that. And, and obviously supporting how the town is going to celebrate itself. Things like light up Oketoks, those kinds of, just making sure that those events don't get lost. Because I truly believe those are the kind of foundational pieces of what tradition is what keeps it a small town.
Yes, for sure. Many residents want more transparency and involvement in decision making. How would you ensure residents' voices are heard and represented at council?
Well, um, we listen and, and then we communicate. And I think that's actually where one of my strengths will be. I have been in communications for 15 years. I have been a personal cheerleader of Oketoks for the last two, being the morning show host. I've been able to, on my social media platforms, uh, remind people of what's coming. Um, you know, keep people up to date on what, what's happening around towns, needs that are happening at the food bank or volunteer positions. So I'm actually just going to maintain, I, my goal is, my personal goal with the skillset that I have is, I, I kind of view it as a bridge. And so there's going to be people who are living day to day lives, who are busy. They don't have time to sit down and go through all of the council minutes. They don't have time to do that. So keeping people up to date on, whether that's with, you know, communications with social media or, or actual face to face contact. Like yesterday, I went to the library and there is a seniors group that meets there in the morning. So sitting and chatting with them and listening to the concerns they have. I, I think as a councillor, um, it will be my responsibility, it is my responsibility to seek out those people, to hear what they say, not waiting necessarily for them to come to me, which is also, they can reach me, but I, I think it's important. And, and I, I'm going to do this as my full time thing. I, I don't have a second job. Uh, and so this will be my, my focus.
Right. Town council works as a team and also with foothills county and the province. How would you approach collaboration and compromise to get results for Oketoks?
Well, in light of everything that's happened in the last 24 hours, where politics have been and are becoming incredibly divisive and heartbreaking. Um, my whole life has been team oriented. I was a medic, you work as a team. Uh, you work, there's two of you, you have a job to do. And, and bigger, there's obviously more. I've been a doula for the last 22 years where you're helping labor support with bringing babies into the world in a very team environment. There's doctors, there's nurses, the family, yourself, you're working as a team. EMS was a team, radio was a team. I've done a co-hosting, you know, shows for the last 15 years and the last two years was solo. Everything that I do up until this point has been team oriented and I will. I know promises are kind of cheesy and you can't really make promises, uh, but this one I can, uh, serve respectfully. And I will have a very healthy and, and respectful working environment with council if I'm elected. I, I don't want divisive politics. I think we are all done with that. I think it's exhausting and it's heartbreaking and it's getting out of hand. And so I am a team oriented person and that's, I, to be honest with you, that's the thing I'm looking forward to the most is the team aspect of it. There's no lone wolf in this. There's seven votes, like that's how this is supposed to be. And, um, I don't know, I think that even if I'm not elected, I hope the people that everybody does elect work harmoniously with each other, because I think we need to start setting a better example of how we can have harmony in disagreement. Cause I guarantee you, I don't agree with anybody on, that could potentially be in council 100%. Nobody does. But how do you then do that and, and articulate your concerns without getting out of hand, without getting angry and, and still being respectful?
For sure. If residents remember just one thing about you after listening to this conversation, what should that be?
I would want people to know that this decision was not made lightly. That I really did a lot of soul searching. There was a bit of self doubt in the beginning. Is this something that I'm capable of doing? Is this something, and knowing that I have done the reading, I'm understanding things, I'm, I'm researching. And, and I'm also approaching this very humbly. And that I, I think that I will be a good candidate. I, it's very easy for me to cheer on Oketoks and I think this is just a continuation of that. But that, I'm gonna give this my absolutely everything and my family is behind me 100%.
Yeah, right on. That's awesome. And those are the seven questions. So great job. You did, uh, you did great. Um, now, let's, uh, let's circle back a little bit. You said you visited with some seniors.
I did. Um, I, I just remember when I told you animals will humble you. Give me one second.
Yeah, yeah, enough.
Cat is demanding. Forgive me, I'm so worried.
No, for sure. Like, what was the nature of the conversations? What are some of the concerns that senior citizens have?
Well, yesterday at the library, uh, I went to meet with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So there was about eight seniors there. And the conversation at the beginning was obviously just introductions. Uh, I was a little bit younger than some of the people that were there, but letting them know why I was there and not to interrupt their visit. And I just wanted to hear. And some of the things that I heard was, uh, one of the community members that was there is, um, in a wheelchair and, um, concerned that there's not a lot of wheelchair accessibility in Oketoks. And I appreciate the simplicity of that in the sense of, um, oh, sure it is, but is it? And then I got thinking and then I drove down after I finished chatting with them. I drove down Main Street and I was like, oh, clearly that's not something that I have had to experience. So why would I have ever thought about certain stores? Like they might seem accessible when I'm looking at it, but I'm not in a wheelchair. I don't know. And she said to me, you know, I would love for you to sit in my wheelchair and try and to get into this store, this store, this store. And I was like, oh, that's, okay. So I took notes as I always do. Another concern that one of the, um, seniors made was, um, at the intersection on the street where, uh, the Ford dealership is, Tim Hortons, Wendy's, like on that drag. Um, she said, the light is very slow and she has a walker and it's really hard for her to get across the street in time. Sometimes feels like it's a bit of a race. And, um, and so, you know, I, I don't know, it could be something as simple as changing the timing of certain lights. I know that's not simple. I don't make a joke, I shouldn't make a joke about that. But, you know, just those are mindful things that I, as a community member in my situation, I've never experienced that. So I, I don't have to race the, the light. I wouldn't have thought of that. Um, what, uh, oh, another, uh, concern that was brought up was, um, things to do around town for seniors. Now, I do know there is a lot because I have announced them on the radio, I have talked about them. But, you know, just making sure that every member of our community has something that they have to do. I mean, we all know that community is important, fellowshipping is important, feeling a sense of, of purpose and being involved means something. And, and these are the community members who built this town to be as beautiful as it is that we're maintaining. And it's important that they don't get forgotten too. So that was my conversation yesterday. And we talked about books.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, I'm sure if you're gonna go to your door, you're keeping your ground, people are gonna bring up taxes and how taxes have been increasing and all that stuff. How, what's your response, uh, when people are complaining to you about taxes?
Uh, that I pay them too and a lot of super fan and nobody is. But I think the way that I have purpose, like intentionally, uh, tried to, to look at them, especially learning more about taxation, which is riveting information while you're reading about taxation. So, I don't know, I'm trying to maybe more explain, and this is the transparency part of the role. Um, is, does it seem hype? Sure. Everybody feels like their taxes are high. Uh, our house has increased in its assessment, so ours are gonna go up, you know, like how it works. But what are we getting for it? And, and are we happy as a community with what we're getting for our taxes? Because this is such a beautiful community. You know, the, the opposite of that conversation is so for, if we're not, if you don't have taxes, what do you want to lose? What do we not want to have in town anymore? What are things that you're willing to give up? It's just part of the back and forth of that conversation. But I'm not exactly sure. I don't, I don't, everything's getting more expensive. I don't see that happening, that we could, uh, alter them and still keep the high, the standard of excellence that Oketoks is very well known for.
Yeah, you're exactly right. Like in the way they churn their trees, right? Like when I go home, I'm not gonna say where home is right now, just because it's not fair. But, um, that city doesn't take care of the trees like Oketoks does. And it's kind of a disaster. It looks like a jungle, but Oketoks, you know, there, there are certain things that, uh, Oketoks does, um, take care of. Now, when people, like I'm sure they complain about traffic and noise and speed and all that stuff. Like, what are, what are your thoughts in regards to those types of subjects?
Well, noise and speed, I live, well, traffic, we'll just address that. So I'm right off 32nd and between the hours of, you know, eight and nine, good luck. And three and four, good luck, especially with HTA and Meadowridge and that kind of stuff. It's, it's a challenge. I definitely plan my day around. You know, so trying to look for opportunities, again, what is available? What kind of things can we help with in that situation? I know my goal would be to, um, help nudge along 32nd to be twinned all the way up. But, um, when it comes to noise and the speed, I, I walk every night. I definitely am familiar with some of the loud vehicles. I, you're gonna get it. People like certain things, loud cars are one of them. Do I think that we can kind of all live together harmoniously? For sure. I think we can probably figure it out. Speed is just a safety thing. That's definitely more of a police issue and, and bylaw and approaching it that way. But I'm not sure. I think, I, I think the approach right now with, uh, you know, making people aware, like, hey, your vehicle might not be sounding very loud to you, but to the mom that's got a baby sleeping, it's incredibly inconvenient. Could we be a little bit more conscientious of our community members? So I don't know.
No, I know. There's a, well, we had twins and when they're babies, uh, yeah, we had a gentleman that would rip past our house a little bit and he'd set, you know, the, the monitors were voice activated and, uh, you know, sound activated and it would set both the monitors off in the exact same time that the kids would wake up crying and, yeah, you would just, uh, as it, when you're sleep deprived and babies, you know, it just, it kind of leaves your mind. Anyways, aside, but, uh, what do you, what do you, what do you love about Oketoks? Like, what, when you think of Oketoks, what are the, some of the characteristics? The things that in your mind make Oketoks great?
There's a feeling in Oketoks, like if you've ever experienced light up Oketoks. If you've ever been to a dog's game on a Sunday or on a, on a summer night, um, winter at the Oketok Oilers. I don't know, there's a sense of community here that is, uh, the roots are deep in this community with its traditions and, uh, the things that make it so wonderful is that it, it takes care of details, that it looks forward to, things that make it simplistic, but so beautiful. And I love that every aspect of what people could be interested in is highlighted in Oketoks. Like one of my favorite things, I'm not, I'm not very artsy. Um, my, my daughter is, I don't know if you can see that I've got pictures around, she's painting. Um, I love the, um, oh, I was gonna call it bits and bobs, that's not right, nooks and crannies. And the art installments, is that something that I would ever in a million years have thought of? No. Is it something that's important so I can get my artistic creative? No, because that's not something that is relevant in my world. But to a whole subset of the community, it is. And I love that we highlight that. And I love that we pay attention to those things. I love that Oketoks has a 24 hour, um, the walkways are cleaned. So if there is, I love that we take care of people who are also maybe introverted, who just want to go out, they don't want to maybe do, I am assuming obviously, but you know, knowing that there's all different kinds of people that love different things. I love that we take care of the details so everybody can be enjoying this community. I love that, um, last year where I walk in my area, some artists were painting reminders on the walkways to use your bell and to let people know that you're behind them. And it's a beautiful art installment that an artist got to do and be proud of, but it's serving a practical function too. And I love just the unique ways, um, that, I don't know, problem solving in some of these. It's, it's small, but those are the details that people love. And I think that's what Oketoks really special.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, you are, uh, a billet mum for the Oketoks Oilers. How, how many billets do you have this year?
Well, yesterday I had four.
Had four yesterday and you, and now?
Then I have three. One moved into a different billet house, but this, this season I've got three. We were debating whether or not, my husband and I, if we should, because I, my, my three older boys all moved out. I've got a firefighter in Victoria, I've got a teacher in Kamloops and an engineer in Saskatchewan. What do we do with these rooms? Uh, we could downsize, which was a thought that we were considering. And then, um, I, I ran into the lady who is the billet coordinator, Sheena Denscombe. And, uh, this was with my work when I was working in the radio station sheet given. And I thought, well, we've got space, why don't we give it a try? And let me tell you, it's my most favorite thing. It's so fun.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, you get to meet these kids and, I don't know, and help them, um, achieve their dreams and, and athletics is a big deal in our house. And my kids were athletes too. And so, I don't know, it's just a win-win for me because we really like it. We really like hockey and it's fun. They eat a lot. There is, there is no small task feeding three, uh, four athletes every day, three meals a day.
For sure.
I enjoy it.
Yeah, no, good for you. Well, when it comes to, uh, well, one of the questions on the list, I really, I really don't love. And I'm coming back to this one specifically because of your background in communication. And it was one of the reasons why I thought I'd start a podcast as well, so that we could, you know, talk to people, we could talk to different organizations. Actually, I just met with, um, 100 Women Who Care. I will, it'll be released in that, you know? It's great, great organization. And so, you know, foothills organization. They don't want to be identified just as Oketoks, but they're a foothills organization. But communication is a problem. And so when, when, when we read the question about many residents want more transparency and involvement in decision making, I have a little bit of a problem with that.
Okay.
And the reason why I have a little bit of a problem with that question is I believe everything is there for us to find out as non-council, as not being, you know, that all that information is there. However, we do lack, uh, TV station, uh, 24 hour news station specifically on Oketoks. Like how, like, do you have some ideas, some ways that things can be, like, obviously we have social media, but then everybody's not on social media. Like, what are some ways that the town can clearly make sure, without a doubt, that we've communicated fully with what's going on? And basically, if people are out of the know, it's their fault.
I, I agree with you. I, I do think that it's there. It is, you can find it, like you said. I mean, this town has a newspaper, this town has a radio station, this town has a podcast. There is, you know, every councillor has social media. It is, it is a partnership. You have to be responsible to get that information. And then, you know, the people in the places to convey that information is also their responsibility. Do I have some ideas? For sure I do. With being in radio and broadcasting for the last 15 years, I have an understanding of how people like to consume information and then obviously delivering it in that way. Short bursts, tiny little, you know? But I also think a bigger part of that too is communicating it in a way that people understand. Like I said and made a joke about taxation, it is not riveting. It's not, it's not, it's very dry. And so maybe instead of not being, uh, communicating it, it's maybe just really difficult to understand. And then, and, and delivering it in a way that is going to be, um, consumable and people can understand it and feel like they understand what is being conveyed. Or, I don't know, maybe as a, as a team, you know, you kind of brainstorm different opportunities and ways to communicate in, in vital information, you know? I'm not sure, but I, I do agree with you. It does land at the feet of the people who want that information. You do have to seek it out and it's not difficult. But making sure that at least there's a platform for everyone. Because, uh, as far as I'm concerned and what I've learned in communications is each social media platform is literally perfect for a specific demographic. So when you're using that and, and knowing how to convey that information, like I said, in ways that people will find it, be able to understand it and be able to, uh, share it. And, and utilizing everything that is available from threads to, um, Blue Sky, to, uh, Instagram, TikTok, you know, and, and having a, a wide variety of an understanding of how to use all of those. And that's one of the things I think that I, I would bring to the table.
Yeah, no, for sure. And, and I think the problem that we do have is I do think that there's a lot of people that move from Calgary and they have no idea the, the DNA of this town. Uh, and I'm, I'm saying Calgary because, um, you know, they're, they're, they're living and working in Calgary. Then they decide that they're going to just, they're gonna live now in Oketoks, but there's, they got a foot in the door in Calgary. And I don't think they really experience everything that Oketoks has to offer. So we have some people that are just using Oketoks as a bedroom community. But then once, you know, uh, life starts to progress, maybe they start having kids, then they realize really all the great things that are here in this town right at their fingertips. And I think that's when people start getting a little bit more engaged, but then they, they weave in and weave out, right? Because some things that you'd think would be common knowledge to almost everybody in Oketoks is not, right?
Yeah.
So communication is certainly vital. Is there any like kind of last thoughts, last things that you'd like to leave with everyone?
Just that, I really look forward to this. It's been really exciting so far. Nervracking a little bit.
Yeah.
But, uh, no, I, I think, actually just to add to what you were just talking about. But I think that's actually the natural progression of the way people become community minded. Is, you know, you grow up, you're a teen, you want to experience things, you want to go out. You get this really great paying job or you're struggling and then you find a community. And, and it's with maturity and a little bit of, um, life progression that makes you kind of reflect and think, oh, well, hold on, now we're in this great little town. And, you know, maybe we have a families, maybe we're starting a family, maybe we're not. Maybe we just adopted an animal, maybe, you know, it's just a single person. And then trying to find, one, having things for that person to be involved in. But I, I think that's normal for it to be a progressive thing. I mean, look at, I'm almost 50 and this is the time where I've decided that I thought municipal politics, 20 year old Joelle would never in a million years have thought about this. But I think that kind of comes with the experience, but then again, going back to, then how do you find those people? How do you connect with them in a way that they can and get that information? But final thoughts? I don't know. I also forgot to mention, um, big, big supporter of the idea of a new rec center. Love that idea. Cause I like the idea of people choosing Oketoks to raise a family, just like we did. I mean, this town, all five of my kids graduated from the comp. My intention in doing this is to, to give back. And so other people's children and, and other people have the experience with Oketoks that we did. We were very fortunate. It's a beautiful town and it served my family in ways that I could probably give a seven hour PowerPoint presentation on all the amazing things. The teachers that changed my children's lives, you know? They are where they are because of these amazing people and, and just now. That I feel it is my responsibility and time, uh, to, to give back and to be able to, to make it good for the next little group of people that are coming up, so.
Yeah, for sure. No, yeah, you certainly touched on it. We're starting to run out of time here a little bit. But, uh, yeah, this town certainly, especially with the, the projections of, uh, growth, a rec center certainly will be in order. And no doubt, a little bit of an evaluation of traffic and how traffic's moving around this town. So, but, uh, Joelle, thank you. Thank you for stepping to the plate. And I'd encourage you to, like, write a note to yourself before you get rolling as to why you're getting into this. And reflect back to that note. If you get voted in, continually remind yourself, because you see people all the time getting into politics and they forget why they got in there. And they get lost and they get into the status quo. But it is, it is also a volunteer position, isn't it? I'm really, like, let's be honest, that's a whole. I'm really, like, let's be honest, that's a whole nother conversation. We'll get into that. So, Joelle, thank you.
Thank you very much and great suggestion with the letter. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, for sure. Take care.
Bye-bye.